From downtown, Gil.
Well, Yana, whereas before LA City Council members were considering a more across-the-board fee on developers, they're now suggesting a more tiered linkage fee system, one that would give developers more breaks if they decided to build in not-so-hot housing markets such as South Los Angeles. Still, that does not end the argument that such a linkage fee could push developers out.
What do we want?
Linkage fees!
And do we want it?
Yeah!
People gather in downtown to support proposed fees on new construction. Revenue from these linkage fees would build much-needed affordable housing for the city's working poor.
We have close to zero steady streams of revenue to build affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles. That's a shame. The linkage fee will change that.
Councilman Jose Wezar and his Planning and Land Use Management Committee unanimously support the fee, but have also decided that a one-size-fits-all charge for builders would not be fair, since development markets vary from neighborhood to neighborhood. Councilman Mike Bonin represents Marina Del Rey, a popular development area on the west side.
There clearly is some sentiment that there are certain parts of the city where development is not as hot as my district. So, as someone who represents that hot area, I enthusiastically endorse the idea of a tiered system.
This tiered system would charge $3 to $5 per square foot for new commercial development, $8 to $15 for new residential development. Builders in hot markets like the west side would be charged more; not-so-hot markets like South LA and parts of the valley, less. Again, money raised would build affordable housing.
We are adamantly opposed to the linkage fee because it is a flawed plan that will lower housing production.
At a packed committee meeting, critics say new fees on developers could force them to build elsewhere, and that charging companies extra always hurts the consumer.
Cigarettes, gasoline tax, airline fees, all pass down to the consumer. An additional cost to housing production will lead to increased rents and home prices for 99.9% of low-income households.
This is like navigating a live minefield, that if we make it through it somehow, we'll live. But if we misstep at all, we don't. And the consequences are devastating.
With several amendments added, the proposal is expected to go before the full city council for a vote. In downtown LA, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Other studies say linkage fees would not slow construction in the city of LA, pointing to Santa Monica, West Hollywood, and Pasadena as examples. City planners say up to $92 million could be raised annually enough to build 1,500 units of affordable housing. Well, what do you think about the LA Police Department using drones in the field? There's quite a debate going on, as some LA residents are up in arms over the issue. It all boils down to privacy rights versus safety, as the LAPD moves forward with a new plan to introduce drones to their tactical arsenal. Anna Marcos has more from one community meeting.
The LAPD could soon be flying drones in your neighborhood if a proposed pilot project goes through. But according to irate citizens at this meeting, it is lower-income neighborhoods of color that will feel the heat of the unmanned aerial systems, or UAS, devices.
They will be used first and foremost to surveil, adding a camera with a camera on drones. They're used to surveil and add more of us, our bodies, our people, in databases that are used against us. If you give a green light to police with drones, they will add to them more weaponry, and they will escalate. That is their tendency.
History shows that SWAT and LAPD in general uses this type of military equipment for one reason only: to occupy and oppress low-income communities of color in South LA, East LA, and Skid Row.
The LAPD introduced the one-year pilot project at a police commission meeting in early August. They say the drones would make high-risk crime situations safer in cases such as barricades, hostage-or-hazmat situations, or armed suspect standoffs, and that the drones would not be armed with weapons or used for routine surveillance.
We can put this device in harm's way rather than an armed officer or a canine, which sometimes may trigger a reaction from an anxiety-ridden suspect.
We, for the neighborhood watch groups in Highland Park, endorse the drones.
There was only meager support for the drones at this meeting, but most residents here objected not just to the drones, but to the lack of public input. They say only four community meetings were scheduled with a one-day notice, none of them in South LA, East LA, or Skid Row.
They don't want us here. You know, it's like if you tell someone less than a day in advance, you know, to show up, you know, you don't really want them here.
I don't have the trust. I absolutely have zero trust.
I can see a lot of uses and a lot better ways to spend this money than on that. Hire another five police to be on the street.
Police say they care about citizens' privacy rights, and that the meetings were posted for a week. Anyone who still wants to give input on drone use can email suas@lapd.online. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Even supporters say they want strong guidelines to prevent drones from being used as weapons or for surveillance. Official guidelines will be drawn up before the drone proposal goes back to the police commission. Well, turning now to another hot-button issue: illegal immigration. Now, if you're worried about your legal status here, the city of LA is here to help with low costs and even free immigration services. Rasha Goel has more.
Jose Mateo is among the LA immigrant residents who is grateful for the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights of Los Angeles's new satellite office in South LA. Given the anti-immigrant climate under the new White House administration, having this office helps give him a place to come to when he needs to renew his work permit.
Now I can, like, work and do my taxes and feel more free, more confident.
Known as CHIRLA, the organization helps immigrants apply for citizenship and assists young immigrants with their applications for the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, or known as DACA, a program that provides work permits and deportation relief.
In this office, we will be able to provide our community with quality, low-cost or free legal services.
We're here today to affirm that the American dream belongs to all of us.
The office receives support and funding from Councilmember Karen Price, who awarded CHIRLA a $500,000 grant for legal immigration services.
Furthermore, it sets aside financial assistance to address steep application fees that often discourage low-income legal permanent residents who are eligible to apply.
Officials say there are 90,000 individuals in this district who are eligible for citizenship who haven't applied. Hopes are having resources and tools such as this one will help encourage them to apply for their citizenship.
No, you don't have to live in CD9 to get all the quality services that are now here available. So, any community south of the 10 can get services here.
I feel more empowered to have this organization, you know, by my side.
While the office is open to those who live across South Los Angeles, the financial assistance will only be available to 9th District residents. In South LA, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
These services will be available through March of 2018. On a related issue, as of deadline time for this story, a policy allowing children of those undocumented immigrants to remain in the US hangs in the balance. Gil Reyes shows us some local Dreamers who potentially have a lot to offer the US if they remain.
I met other people like me, and that completely changed my life.
Melody Klingefuss is an undocumented immigrant from Guatemala. She also holds a master's degree from USC. In fact, the other young people seated at the table are a lot like her, all arriving in the US as children and are either college-bound, college-educated, or have pursued advanced degrees.
I would suggest, if the vast majority of people who are expressing opinions about this issue had the opportunity to meet our Dreamers, they would understand it's just the right thing to do.
The right thing to do, according to Senator Kamala Harris, is to let them stay, offer a pathway to citizenship so they can contribute their skills to the US economy without fear of deportation. Harris meeting the Dreamers at the UCLA Labor Center.
It's about people who are prepared to earn their right to be here, who are demonstrating that they are earning their right to be here.
But as of deadline time for this story, the residency was in jeopardy. 10 state attorneys general had threatened to sue the Trump administration unless it scrapped DACA, or Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. This 2012 policy has so far allowed children of undocumented immigrants to stay. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti says DACA makes good sense, and also helps to prevent an underground economy.
We want to see folks come out of the shadows. It was a great boon to our economy. We have $460 billion in the next 10 years that Dreamers will be able to contribute to the economy. When they're pushed back in the shadows, it not only depresses their wages, it depresses wages for those who are native-born, who have to compete with people working under the table.
We're going to continue advocating for a permanent solution. We're going to continue being the voice of others who are afraid to come out, and we're going to continue pushing for some type of legislation that still allows us to work in this country and continue providing for our families.
At the UCLA Labor Center, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Senator Harris urges Congress to get started on passing the Dream Act and comprehensive immigration reform. Over at City Hall, a new call for women in LA to take leadership roles, as LA marked Women's Equality Day. And for the second year in a row, Councilmember Nuri Martinez took the lead. Anna Marcos explains.
Imagine a City Hall chambers filled to capacity with all women. That's what happened at LA City Hall for Women's Equality Day, as Councilmember Nuri Martinez hosted a panel to talk about women in politics. The main focus: we need more women.
We're celebrating 97 years that women got the right to vote in this country. So, we're just reminding young women and women in general how to continue to get involved in politics, become engaged in the community.
Women's Equality Day does indeed mark the adoption of the 19th Amendment, which gave US women the right to vote. But it has come to mean much more. Some of these panelists are fighting for our schools, for LGBT rights, for people in our state and our city, and some are fighting what they call our rape culture.
You know, I'd taken it for granted that we were doing as well as we were, when all of a sudden Donald Trump was out there talking the way he was about women and our bodies.
This panelist identifies as both male and female.
When I walk down the street, and when the police stop me, when I'm with my white wife, they treat me as a young black man. When I'm in the workplace, I'm treated as a black woman, and I'm treated as being angry or overly emotional.
And this panelist has decided it's time to run for state assembly.
And we had seen the rhetoric across the country about immigrants and undocumented people, and women, and refugees, and having been all those things and being all those things, I decided that I needed to do something about it.
I think we need this, as young women, you know, entering fields and hoping to take on, you know, positions of leadership ourselves one day. It's very inspiring to be part of these discussions.
For many of the women here, newfound motivation to go out and be a leader. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Currently, our own City Hall boasts two women, Councilmembers Nuri Martinez and Monica Rodriguez. Visiting ships dock in San Pedro for a star-spangled salute to our armed forces. Gil Reyes has more from Fleet Week, which started off with a bang.
The city kicked off LA's Fleet Week with a double-cannon salute from the hosting vessel, San Pedro's own USS Iowa. Navy veteran Dominic Pelachati had served onboard the Iowa in the 1980s, and returns for the first time with his family during Fleet Week.
One of the best things I ever did was serve my country, and especially serve on an iconic historical battleship, Iowa. And it's really a joy to show them.
As your mayor, as a Navy officer myself, it's a big thrill for me to do this. Fleet Week is a great way to connect with our United States Navy, to see the courage, to see the bravery, to see the skills, to see the unmatched ability of the men and women who defend this nation.
Besides boarding the Iowa, you could also board six visiting vessels in LA's event, including the USS Anchorage, the USS Dewey, and the USS Pasadena, and for free through Labor Day weekend. Meantime, 1,100 service members tour Los Angeles during the stop. By early this week, they'll be gone, but the USS Iowa will remain in Los Angeles, open for tours year-round. The Pelachati family says the Iowa is their favorite vacation destination so far.
We did a mountain dismount bike tour, we've kayaked, we even toured Warner Brothers, but this is way, way better.
My favorite part of it was like the turrets and the big machinery and stuff, because I love this stuff, big battleships, guns and everything.
Area Councilman Joe Buscaino is fired up over other amenities in San Pedro.
Amazing project underway with redevelopment of Porzacall, the San Pedro Public Market. We have new cafes and shops coming online, housing coming in the downtown San Pedro area, so things are happening.
Even after Fleet Week. In San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Cities like Portland and Seattle also held Fleet Weeks this summer. San Diego, which began the tradition more than 80 years ago, will have theirs in October. Well, few neighborhoods are as racially diverse as LA's Mid-Wiltshire area, and those differences were highlighted recently through an art exhibition that inspired peace and conversation. Gil Reyes shows us.
A mixing of colors to create something different. LA's Korean and Latino-Americans curate a project, and this is what they got.
We came together to do a cross-community art exhibit. We want to show the city, the state, and the rest of the country that here in LA, we do things differently. We embrace and love diversity.
Getting them in the same room, getting them in a comfortable space, and what more comfortable, beautiful space than a space that holds all of this wonderful art together.
We're at the Kim family's EK Gallery for an exhibit called "Embrace LA: Diversity Through Art." "Embrace LA" is an effort to increase dialogue on race and gender relations, following a rash of hate crimes nationwide. This exhibit, just part of that conversation, led by LA City Council President Herb Wesson.
Sports, music, and art, these are three things that have been bringing us together as human beings since the beginning of time. I can't think of a better way to do it than with art, narrative art, abstract art, you name it, I think we've got it here.
Artist Joseph Chicas's photographs depict the struggles of LA minorities.
I have photography from protests where we have movements coming together, like the immigration movement and the Black Lives Matter movement, joining forces together to advocate for social justice.
While artist Eddie Lee prioritizes respect for women in his paintings.
I think that shows in the diversity of the women that I paint. I do paint a lot of women of color and all different ethnicities.
LA's first Korean-American Councilmember David Rue also says the exhibit is a chance for young, up-and-coming talent to showcase their work.
Even the building itself, which was a very non-productive space, is now being used in such a positive manner. It's such great energy, especially during these times, for us to have such an amazing space like this.
And an amazing place to express different viewpoints through a range of colors and styles. From EK Gallery in Mid-Wiltshire, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The center is an extension of the LA City Department of Cultural Affairs. Well, plays and readings about diversity also took center stage, as a new act opens at several Lamert Park theaters. We're talking about the Lamert Park Vision Theater Festival, run by the Department of Cultural Affairs. Anna Marcos attended opening night.
The place has a speakeasy kind of vibe as Lamert Park kicks off its Vision Theater Festival of staged readings. But tonight, on opening night, no readings, just a time to relax and enjoy yourself the way you would at any speakeasy.
Boy, this is our culture. You never want to forget your culture. We're just sitting over there at the table, just talking about, we as slaves, our family how we came up, as slaves, we're African-Americans, whatever you want to call yourself. The idea is that we have a culture, and we want to maintain our culture. Our culture is enjoying ourselves, dancing, writing plays, talking about our lives and all that good stuff.
The night of music and theater pays tribute to R&B singers Sam Cooke and Bobby Womack. Even the neighborhood gets its own tribute with a Crenshaw medley of songs. Earth Angel, another big hit with all the lip-syncing going on. But even this crowd-pleaser gives us a serious peek at black history. A black singing group broke the song back in 1954, but it became a bigger hit when a white singing group released a cover. The hope is all this activity and entertainment puts Lamert Park back on the map in a big way, not just culturally, but economically as well. This year, the festival features eight nights of theater with 17 productions. Organizers say they won't stop there. They want to grow the festival to international status.
I've always been ambitious, you know. Most of the people say my projects are bigger than my resources and budget, and that's very true, but if you don't reach high, you know, you'll never accomplish anything. And I've always felt that it should be Lamert Park, the worldwide destination, and that's what we're working on.
I love art. I love art. I ended up at Dorsey. After that, I went to work for Roberta Flack as her first road manager, so I've been in art, music, like, I'm 85 now, so I've been in there a minute.
And with tap dance, poetry, spoken word, bilingual productions, and a group of plays featuring black culture, more art and theatrical fun are definitely on the way. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And by the way, one of the venues for the festival, the Vision Theater, is in the process of getting a huge makeover by the city. Well, it's that time of year when backpacks get bought or dusted off to make room for school books. But at one East Side Elementary School, backpacks are part of a free giveaway, thanks to the LAPD. Anna Marcos takes us there.
You put together a room full of school kids, some generous LAPD officers, and lots of new backpacks, and you get some happy chaos. High fives and handshakes were happening all over the place, as 126 students at Griffith Avenue Elementary got their new packs, just in time for the new school year.
I'm gonna take it to school, carry stuff in it, like colored pencils, notebooks, and my snack, and everything.
Do you study harder with a backpack?
Yes.
The students were chosen out of close to 500 kids in the school, depending on who needs the packs the most.
There's some kids who are unfortunate, who can't obtain a backpack, who don't get new school clothes, who don't get school supplies. So, when I was approached to give these backpacks, I thought, just a backpack may inspire some of these children to be eager to learn, want to come to school.
Coming to school with a brand-new backpack, I think, gives them a little more bump in their self-esteem, and allows them to be ready for learning.
The new backpack is so special, one young student is going to save his.
But I would take this when I'm in middle school.
So, you're gonna save yours, huh?
Yeah.
For the big time?
Yes.
Yep, it's still got the tags on it, and apparently, it's gonna stay that way until the big day comes a year from now. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Although the LAPD organized the event, the backpacks were provided by the Grace Ford Salvatore Foundation, which helps underserved communities like the Hollenbach area. Another affordable housing complex for veterans opens its doors. A neighborhood festival highlights the benefits of solar power, and an intersection in the Crenshaw District becomes a temporary gathering space for the community. All these stories in City Beat. Councilmember Gil Sadio, other community members, and groups were on hand for the grand opening of the Marmion Way Apartments in Cypress Park, a new affordable housing complex for veterans and their families. Marmion Way Apartments consists of 49 new affordable homes, which will include services that are specifically designed to support stable, independent living among people who are transitioning out of long-term homelessness. On-site case managers will work one-on-one with tenants to ensure lasting housing stability.
Let's make this be something we do typically.
The Third Annual Solar-Powered Music and Arts Festival was held recently at Mariachi Plaza in Boyle Heights. The festival highlights the benefits of using solar energy and encourages residents to go green by connecting them to available resources and programs the city offers.
Because ultimately, the environment and the environmental component that we're trying to promote here connects with all of the issues that we focus on, whether it's economic, or whether it's just regular social service stuff, like, it all connects, and we want to make that connection.
The corner of Crenshaw and 54th Street came alive during a Great Streets pop-up event. The community came together to enjoy the outdoor space with kids' activities, outdoor seating, live DJ, free food, various vendors, and a movie screening. It's all part of Mayor Eric Garcetti's Great Streets Initiative, a plan to beautify and transform busy streets into community gathering spaces.
It's helped us to community engagement, to be more involved and inclusive of our neighbors, and to know our neighbors, and to recognize our neighbors. When we're in the public, we go out and say hi to them and greet them, to be more friendly and kind to one another.
Well, take the whole family to a community festival with free carnival rides and giveaways, enjoy a performance of Disney's Aladdin in Spanish, and take in an outdoor movie before the summer's over. All this and this week's Things to Do. Save the date! The Office of Councilman Karen Price invites you and your family to attend the first-ever UCLA Day Community Festival in CD9. Enjoy free carnival rides, giveaways, and application writing workshops. Don't forget to spread the word to your family, friends, and neighbors. Everyone is welcome. It all takes place Saturday, September 9, at the South Park Recreation Center at 345 East 51st Street. For more information, call the councilman's office at 323-846-2651. Councilmember Gil Sadio and TNH Productions are presenting a live-stage production of Aladdin in association with El Centro del Pueblo and Casa 0101 Theater. When the rebellious princess and a delinquent street rat meet in the marketplace, they find something special in one another, rise above the barriers between them, and with a little magic, help create a better future. This production is performed in English and Spanish at the Los Angeles Theater Center in downtown Los Angeles at 514 South Spring Street. The performances take place from September 7 through the 17th. For more, visit thelatc.org. If you love Julie Andrews and James Garner, then don't miss a screening of Victor Victoria at Echo Park Lake. It's all part of the Echo Park Film Series, sponsored by Councilmember Mitchell Farrell. So, grab a chair, blanket some friends, and enjoy a night at the lake. The screening takes place Saturday, September 9 at 7 PM. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
911 Emergency Operator 271. The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls. Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Las Feliz. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache with that? Would you like a mustache with that?
Good morning, good morning. Would everybody please, please take your seats. Today is Friday, September 8th. I'd like to welcome you to City Hall, to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Buscagino, Sadio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. O'Farrell moves. Mr. Corretts seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Sadio moves, and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there is a request to refer Item 12 back to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee for further consideration.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing.
You have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on both.
Okay, continue.
Items 3 through 15 are items for which public hearing has been held, and, Mr. President, committee reports for Items 3 through 6, 7, 9, and 11 have been submitted and posted for council's consideration.
Okay, thank you. Members, any specials members? I don't see any, Madam Clerk. Let's prepare to vote. If you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Item number 16 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. Do we have cards on this item?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 16.
Then let's hold 16, and that brings us where?
For the continuation agenda, Item 17 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Specials members, let's prepare to vote on Item 17. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. Mr. President, uh, that brings council to items called special or general public comment or presentation, sir.
Okay, all right. Yes, uh, one second, I'm gonna call on, uh, the Honorable Mr. Herb Wesson. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, and members. Again, today is one of my favorite days. It is Pet Adoption Friday, and I have with me...
Toothless.
Wait, what's her name?
His name is Toothless.
His name is Toothless?
It's from, uh, How to Tame Your Dragon.
Oh, from How to Tame Your Dragon. Okay, and Toothless is jittery.
Oh, there you go, kid.
Anyway, Toothless is approximately, what, three years old? He's a little nervous, and, uh, did his, uh, was, did, was he a stray, or what can you tell me about him?
He was, um, so he was a possible owner, so he came in with, um, a microchip, and we couldn't find his owner, and maybe they didn't update his, uh, their information. And so now he's up for adoption, and we've had him since, uh, 8:25, he's been available. And he is in a special program, working with underprivileged kids called Canine Connection. So he is very, very good in temperament.
Okay, well, he's, Toothless is very good in temperament, and he gets along with, with young people. And what we're trying to do, and what we've done, uh, I think I've done this for over 11 years, is, uh, every, once or twice a month on Friday, we bring forth a pet and try to find a home for that pet. We have, in the city of Los Angeles, a 100% adoption rate, and it's important that we keep that, uh, 100% record going. Now, Toothless is ready to go, so if someone were to, to get him, they could get him right now, correct?
Yeah.
Now, um, he's, he's microchipped, he's ready to go, and he's looking for a home. If you ever want unconditional love, one of our companion animals is definitely what you're looking for. If you are watching us on television, and by the time you contact us, you find out that Toothless has been adopted, you know, don't despair. Just, uh, call us at 888-452-7381. We have shelters throughout the city of Los Angeles, and we have hundreds of adorable animals, just like this young fella here. Again, he is three years old, and he's looking for a home. Now, I've, uh, you just slipped me a very important document, starting, what, today?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, starting Saturday and Sunday, we're having a citywide super adoption at, at eight different locations throughout the city of Los Angeles, and we'll have over 1,000 pets available. So please, uh, you can give us a call at this 888-452-7381 and find out where these locations are. In fact, we have some of them right here, with the East Valley Animal Shelter, North Central Animal Shelter, uh, the West LA Animal Shelter, West Valley Animal Shelter, South LA Animal Shelter, Harbor Animal Shelter. So again, eight locations throughout the city of Los Angeles. So, we're, I'm gonna ask you to stay a bit in the back. So for those of you that are listening to me on the council radio or watching this on television, if you want to come down to the council chambers and meet this young fella and see if you'd like to take him home, I'm gonna ask you to stay for, uh, a few minutes. If there's anyone here in our audience today that would like to adopt Toothless, please contact the sergeants, and we'll take you in the back, and we'll make it happen. So anyway, we have a, Mr. Corretts, a 100% dog adoption rate when we bring our Pet Adoption Friday, and let's keep that alive. So if no one else wants it, I'm gonna buy this dog for you. Uh, and so somebody needs to call Gail, his wife, and let, uh, her know that, uh, he'll be bringing home a friend for dinner. But all seriously, if you want to save a life, if you want to make a difference, you do it one companion animal at a time. So I'm urging anyone that's in this building, anyone that can hear my voice, anyone that's watching this on television, to please, let's save Toothless' life, and then, uh, Saturday and Sunday, let's go out and do the best we can to adopt the, what, the other 1,000 pets that will be available.
It will be discounted.
And there, and there's a discount.
Thank you.
There will be a discount when they adopt the dogs, okay? Does that incorporate Toothless as well?
Not today.
Not today.
Starting tomorrow.
Not today. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll work something out. But if you're interested, 888-452-7381, and we'll be in the back for a little while with Toothless. Mr. President, members, thank you.
Mr. President, you know, they say that Toothless has more bark than bite. Uh, Mr. Corretts, when you're available?
Yes, uh, I just want to add for the record that Toothless was named for a character, but Toothless is not Toothless. He's a normal dog, so people should adopt a very cute and healthy and toothful dog.
So we changed his name to Toothful. Okay, members, I want to just take a moment, if I might, uh, for a quick introduction. Sitting next to me, uh, today, where's, uh, the cameras? I want to get, get, sitting next to me today, all the way from Indianapolis, Indiana, is my sister-in-law, Jatana Dern. Let's give her a warm welcome to the city of Los Angeles. She's up, up here making sure that I'm doing things right. Mr. Englander.
Welcome her here as well, as, thank you very much. Um, Mr. President, I meant to vote no on, uh, Number 8 and push my button on that. Uh, if you could, just record me on a no vote on Number 8.
You get that on Number 8? We should be able to do that without a revote.
And then, uh, Xim Rodriguez, like, the second best, it'd be, um, reports on the fire.
Can we get Mr. Murphy? Sean Murphy, would you come up? Come on up, Sean. Okay, Mr. Murphy, you have Items 1A and 16, A and B, and then your general public... A and B, and then your general public comments. So go right ahead.
Uh, yeah, I'm back. Nine years I've been coming to City Hall. If anybody doesn't know, it's nine years at City Hall. Item nineteen, I support. I support all the items. My man for general public comment.
Give him his one minute for general public comment. Go on, Sean.
Uh, yeah. Labor Day weekend, Laurel Canyon Apartments, we had our power outage for 23 hours. DWP needs to do a better job. Everybody was a little, had a wait inconvenience for 23 hours. I'm sending DWP a message. Do a better job.
Thank you. Could somebody pull up Mr. Previn, Eric Previn, on my screen? Mr. Previn, are you here? Eric Previn? Mr. Previn has items one A, item two, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and general public comment.
Uh, thank you, sir.
In fact, no, my mistake. The, so for right now, you have items one A, two, and general public comment. The other items are when we get into the special, and then you'll be afforded the opportunity to speak to them.
Is the Ralph M. Parsons item available for comment?
What item is that, mister?
I believe that's item number fourteen.
Well, then it's not available.
They're giving fifty thousand.
I gave you, Mr. Previn.
Okay, fine, I just wanted to say thank you. Because I appreciate money when they give it for a good cause, for the Latin American artist thing.
Mr. Previn, just stay on the item.
Don't panic. Item number one...
No, Mr. Previn, stop his time. Mr. Previn, do you want to speak on the items? Or do you want to spar with me verbally?
I'm sorry, I'd like to speak on the items.
Then just speak to the items.
I'll do that. Item number one is the great Paul Coretts. He's got a district, it's called CD five. And in that district, there are little constituents trying to grow their things in the yard and take care of their little plot. And here we have a pernicious citation against the property owner. It's a lien. The guy wrote a letter saying, "My God, I'm sick. I can't get to the hearing in July." So he'd asked that it be continued until now, and I don't know if he was able to make it today. But I would ask for relief for this guy, because, you know, again, Mr. Sadio, we could try to do no harm as part of our policies, because when we go around perniciously citing people for, you know, sometimes putting up a place where someone could sleep in their garage, we're working against our better instincts. And then item number two, which is, of course, Mr. Englander is rolling out a new program. It's a program where we're leaning on people for the fire department. Is that a... You guys got a, if you speak the truth, you get in trouble down here? What is that?
Why don't we hold his time for a second?
Well, I'll try to finish up later.
Sergeants, if you'd please evacuate the chambers, and we'll recess this meeting. Council members, please go to the rear of the chambers and evacuate to the south lawn. Media, please, everybody.
Okay, if everyone could please... If everyone could please, uh, take their seats. We were given authorization to return to the council chambers. Everything is fine. Uh, Madam Clerk, before I call Mr. Previn back, in fact, sergeants, if we could clear the center, before I call Mr. Previn back, every item that we act on today will be moved forthwith, okay? If you could give Mr. Previn, uh, let's restart his clock at a minute and have Mr. Previn come forward. Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. It's, uh, item two I was talking about was the assessments. I think, you know, it's a shared community interest that people take care of their properties such that they don't, uh, have fire hazards on the property. Um, and, uh, I've monitored the way they run the system. They send you a little self-inspection thing and then, but this is where Englanders are aggregating people who we're gonna lean against now because they must have not been cooperative. I, of course, went to one of the committee meetings and it was not, it did not seem like a beacon of justice to me, if we're being honest. Uh, it seemed like him kinda deciding if he knew the guys or someone had brought him in and then, you know, there was very rarely any kind of movement. I don't know. Uh, not, not my preference there, if we're being honest. I saw the mayor's bulking up on women for the many commissions. He has exceeded all administrations in pointing women and we're very proud of that, so thank you for that.
Mr. President, that item has already been voted on?
Oh, that's fine, because I think we're getting very close with, uh, 10 seconds, so I could just slam a comment about Prop K before my general public comment.
Just give him his one minute. Just give him his one minute. Go on, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. So, the general public comment, as I was discussing with, uh, Councilmember Coretts, who's a brave fighter and a bicycle rider, but not a swimmer. The triathlon is coming up this, not this, but next weekend, and, uh, it's sponsored by Nautica and Herbalife. Full stop. I also spoke with Councilmember Martinez and Ms. Rodriguez, I want you to listen to this. They may not participate on the county beaches, recruiting Angelinos on a day when we are protecting people who live here from these kinds of pernicious schemes. When the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles provide public funds for the celebration of the healthful lifestyle on beaches in California, sitting in the nestled in the middle of that cannot be a group that runs ILMs, where today in China, they're throwing Herbalife out, uh, put a little asterisk there, they're very concerned about these pernicious schemes that hurt Angelinos, not just in Los Angeles, but around the world. So, they may not celebrate for $75,000 to some event promoter. It's not cool. And I appreciate your calling, Sheila, Mr. Coretts, personally, and you too, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. We could put, uh, Mr. Walsh on the screen. Mr. Walsh, 1A216A1920. No, those are in the special, so, for right now, 1A216A, and general public comment.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. We just had a fire alarm and evacuation. Do you wonder, does any of the press wonder what happened? They're not gonna tell you.
Just stay on the item.
The fire department told me, you can arrest me for saying-
Mr. Walsh, stay on the item.
We could've been burnt to death.
No, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, stay on your item.
Stay on my item? You scumbag.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, no, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, let's go give him his, Mr. Walsh, since you just wanna say what you wanna say, give him his general public comment.
Okay.
Give him his one minute.
The reason that we were evacuated is that the sprinkler system downstairs in the parking, uh, garage, short-circuited. This whole city, this whole building is a fire trap!
Mr. Walsh, I'm not gonna have you break the city's equipment. Don't, don't do that. Go ahead.
The city's equipment doesn't work. The fire, now, if that is a lie, Mr. O'Farrell, that the system, the fire downstairs didn't work, that it was broken, that it went off, they don't give a syphilitic rat's ass whether you cameraman live or die. And I'm telling you right now, no other city in, in California has systematic false alarms the way we do here. And sooner or later, it, this, 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 uh, city council-
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, thank you. And let me ask, every time any of one, anyone yells into the speaker, it goes directly into the ear of our trans, uh, our translator, and that's just unfair. Do not do that. When, uh, you yelled into the mic, they winced because, uh, anyway, that we will not tolerate. Let's bring up Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, items 1A, items 2, and then your general public comment.
Well, when you have a lien on your property, it's in the public's interest to come here and protest. You shouldn't have to be going through all these troubles of hardship and harm, physically and mentally, the stresses of dealing with a lien. Should you? Should you be charged 300% interest so you can get fat like me, worried about life and bullshit on liens 'cause some asshole comes to your door, posts a lien and says you have a violation, clean up your yard, take down the tents, and stick all your quincherro in the garage when you don't have one? This is Los Angeles, we live in our garages. Roof, roof. And then, item number 2, fool, dealing with, only one particular item, which if I could find, because his agenda's so complicated, is this. Future public hearings dated for the hearing appeals or objections of proposed 2016-2017 weed abatement. I'm not talking about the weed we smoke, but I'm talking about the weeds that you see every day in Los Angeles, the eye sores of how we live our lives, your lives, and you pay taxes to see weed abatement in your community. You should feel goddamn ashamed of that, especially Caltrans, who doesn't clean up the freeway on ramps or off ramps, and you should be ashamed to be called Americans. You pay tax for your cars to clean the shit up. It's called weed abatement. And let me finish saying, brush abatement assessment, roll schedule for locations, what was throughout the city, as John Walsh Hollywood Highlands says, fuck you!
Let's give him his one minute.
Now that under 8 U.S. Code 1373 Sacramento Legislative Law under L.A. Safe, Dreamers never care, never do they care regarding immigration reform, Dreamers. They want you to work and bust tables and clean their yards so they can all look good for $200,000, but look when they show up late. Look when they come to work late. Why? Holding to the words that don't matter, don't matter, D-A-C-A, D-A-C-A, because nothing matters. They never cared. They never cared. The same way veterans who are homeless live in your streets, dying 22 a year and under suicide control, and we all know that section 45.101 Business, 45.120 Facility Services, 45.103-
Thank you, Mr. Herman, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman, thank you. Your time has expired. Your time has expired. Let's vote on items 1, 2, and I believe item 16. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Thank you. I'm gonna do some, uh, general public comment for a bit. Antonio Ramirez, Yolanda Alanez, Joe J., Val Carlson, no, in fact, I had the wrong general public comment list. It's my, my mistake. There we are. Margarita Amador, Ann, Ann Jobe, I saw you, Ann, come on. Ms. Ramirez? Identify yourself.
Hello, good morning. My name is Margarita Amador and I'm a resident in Boyle Heights, and I'm here today to ask you to please move forward with modernizing L.A.'s billboards, ordinance so that it will benefit all of Angelinos in, in our neighborhoods. I strongly encourage you to take advantage of this rare opportunity for a new funding source by allowing digital outside the limit sign districts and in appropriation, in appropriate locations on private and public properties. The need is here now, the opportunity is here now, and our time is to act now. Um, thank you, and please, thank you for, um, you know, I, I support that you're going to take a vote today to make our city a sanctuary city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Ms. Ramirez, followed by Ms. Jobe and then Val Carlson.
Thank you very much. I wanna extend my gratitude, my thanks, to our honorable El Jefe, the great Moses, Donald Trump, and his family, and also-
Ms. Colder, time, Ms. Ramirez, keep it down a little bit.
Our great and honorable United States Attorney General Jeff Sessions for finally enforcing the rule of law, for placing a travel ban, and no DACA, no DACA, thank you, we're finally gonna get rid of-
No, 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 let her speak.
We're finally gonna get rid of these dumbass culeros, no DACA, no domestic terrorists, no Dreamers, no more, can you stay here and terrorize Americans, legal law-abiding American citizens and our United States military veterans, for they are vile, uncivilized, wicked, nosy, venomous, jealously, filthy, nasty, come a caca, racist, hate-mongering assholes. So, again, no amnesty, no asylum, please, immediate deportation of these assholes, because they have terrorized American citizens. God bless you, Donald Trump and Attorney General Jeff Sessions, and, uh, God bless-
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Hey, 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 folks? All right, all right, all right. Now, we deal with that every day, so just relax, because you're gonna get your time and you'll be able to speak your mind, and I don't wanna have anybody interrupt you. So, we're gonna have to let this poor lady say whatever she wants to say. Now, with that said, Ms. Jobe, Ann, it's always a pleasure.
Thank you. Uh, is this public comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, actually, I came down here to support, uh, my state Senator Hertzberg's bill, and thank you very much for, for doing that, and also to say how wonderful it is to have someone representing, not just someone, but having Monica Rodriguez, um, representing us at CD7. Our seat was vacant for far too long, and I thank you very much for serving us, and I just wanted to speak for Hertzberg and speak for Monica Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's always a pleasure to see you, Ann. Val Carlson, please come down. Yolanda Alanez, Jane Toguchi, Stacy Brummeister. Yes, ma'am, identify yourself, please.
Yes, my name is Val Carlson, I'm with the Freedom Socialist Party, and I'm here today to present you some petitions signed by over 1,200 individuals, calling on, um, the mayor and the city council to do two things. First, to make sanctuary a reality here in Los Angeles by designating all of the city's libraries, park and recreation facilities, social services offices, and government buildings to be safe places where Homeland Security and ICE cannot enter to apprehend or harass immigrants. The petition also calls on you and the mayor to immediately declare a homelessness state of emergency here, open vacant properties to the homeless residents, and provide restrooms, garbage pickup, and other survival services at each location. These issues are connected in that the same economic crisis that is causing this vast homelessness in the United States that we experience at such a high level here in Los Angeles also causes people from other countries who have to come here in order to survive.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. If I could get the next speaker, no, your time's expired. Next speaker, please. Yolanda? Yolanda, no, ma'am, next speaker. You can hand that to the sergeant. Yes, identify yourself.
I, I'm Yolanda Alanez with the Freedom Socialist Party. I wanted to speak on general comments and item 18 and item 19 as well. Um, on the general comments, whatever you decide to call, uh, Los Angeles a sanctuary city or not, the point is, what do you do about it? And as my comrade Val said, you need to declare a sanctuary where the city protects those, not only just under DACA, but every person that's here undocumented. You can do that by not allowing ICE into public areas that the city can control. That's one real thing you can do right now. The other, on, on terms of item 18, your city homeless coordinator, it seems to me that you should have a coordinator for sanctuary cities, have someone who can, who can really work with undocumented, uh, immigrants and refugees in this city that can directly make policy. On item 19-
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker, Jane. No, you got, everybody gets a minute, that's it. Next speaker, next speaker, next speaker. Please come forward. If you look at the timer, you see how much time you're allotted. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jane Toguchi, a resident in O'Farrell's district. Uh, lives of Silver Lake residents like me are turned upside down because of Airbnb, yet few in the city seem to care. All over L.A., residents are being replaced by tourists with roller bags and homes with lock boxes. Three years ago, investors bought the house across from me for a dedicated Airbnb and later listed three more. Now, these rentals are gone, but more crop up. Days ago, I found hosts Zack and Mel, a listing that sleeps 23 people. They also have six more units nearby, over 900 reviews, and they warn of a $50 vomit fee. This is outrageous in our close-knit Silver Lake neighborhood. Another neighbor, two blocks up, now has an Airbnb next door that sleeps 10. This is not true home sharing. These profiteers make money off the backs of long-term L.A. residents like me. The motion was introduced in June 2015. Please, it's time to adopt an ordinance with a primary residence requirement and a cap of 60 to 90 days. This should accommodate hosts who wanna share a room and present commercials-
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Thank you, thank you very much. Now, just to explain, we are in general public comment, that's one minute. General public comment is one minute. If you've signed up to speak on items in the special agenda, we're not there yet. Once we get there, then we'll call the names. So, this is general public comment, and it's one minute. So, yes, ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Stacy Burmester, and I've been a resident for, in the Valley for three years in Councilmember Blue and Fields District. I know many people think problems associated with short-term rentals only affect the West Side. I'm here today to say that it's not true. Short-term rentals affect every single community in Los Angeles through higher rents and home prices, and more and more housing that is shifting to the short-term rentals. The growing number of full rental units throughout the Valley, Hollywood, Silver Lake, we support home sharing, not full unit and entire building rentals. Lake, we support home sharing, not full unit and entire building rentals. I came to the Valley to live with neighbors, both homeowners and renters. Now I'm seeing more and more tourists and vacationers coming to my street and fewer friendly and familiar faces. I'm asking you to step up and adopt the ordinance that protects tenants and neighborhoods in the Valley and across the city. Please adopt a reasonable cap of 60 days. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm looking for Watan Valentine. Watan Valentine, Linda Lux, Sylvia Arath, John Wolfe, Sylvia Maracue. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Jutan Valentine, a longtime Venice resident, eighth generation. My great-great uncle, Urban Tabor, he was a close friend and chauffeur to Abbot Kenny, and last Friday, a senior came to me, and she said that, asked me did I know her apartment was. She had been in the place for 41 years, and with this short term, it's like living with a bunch of hotels, and I'm hoping that it would be 60 days and that the owner would be on the property, because this way hopefully it would take care of some of the problems. And it's a shame that with people like this lady who's a senior, who has lived here 41 years in the apartment, has to leave, and I can't, I told her I will try, but it's impossible with all these short-term apartments.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, please identify yourself.
Good morning, council members, and Mr. President. My name is Linda Lux. I'm the former president of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners and the Venice Neighborhood Council. I was a 50-year resident of Venice until my house was sold and a nice family bought it but turned it into a short-term rental. I don't understand why it's taking so long to enact a new ordinance. I don't understand why the existing law, which prohibits any short-term rentals in residential areas, is not being enforced. There are such egregious things happening in Venice. We're losing people we know and love every day, and there's no enforcement, except a couple of poster child, but there's so many worse things happening. Please, cap it at 60 days, owner-occupied units, and don't let rent-stabilized people leave. Nobody has a problem with true home sharers. They've always been there. They should stay there and maybe have special ways that they don't apply, because if you're on site, you're not causing a problem in your neighborhood. You have a responsibility and accountability, but if it's the people that have corporations--
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Sylvia Arath, and I've been living in Venice for over 40 years. I love it there, but it's recently been ground zero for short-term rental conversions, which have been systematically destroying our community. Little progress has been made in the two years since Mike Bonin introduced a motion to regulate short-term rentals. Please understand that the proposed 180-day cap will do little to alleviate the devastating effects of these short-term rentals. According to studies done, it takes only 83 days of short-term rentals to equal one year of regular long-term tenants. I strongly urge you to adopt a 60-day cap and not allow conversions of any rent-stabilized units. Our neighborhoods can't take it. Venice is just suffering so much, and this will strike a balance between the needs of the community and those that truly want to share their primary--
Thank you, thank you. If I could get the next speaker, and I'm also looking for Ellie Farmer and Ina Henry. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, good morning. My name is Sylvia, and I'm with Sage. I'm here on behalf of one of our members, Santiago Huerta. Santiago Huerta, his family, two children and wife, now are facing displacement again, once more. They were displaced 10 years ago when they built the Staples Center, and now with Airbnb, they're trying to displace them again, and we don't think that this is right. This is a person that has been living here for like over 30 years, and being displaced once more is gonna have a big toll on the family. He can barely afford the rents right now, and if he is forced to move again, he's not gonna be able to find another place. So, like we, you know, I was very moved by you trying to find that, you know, toothless dog a home. Let's make sure of that.
Thank you. Next speaker, identify yourself. Susan Hunter, if you could line up. Yes, sir.
My name is John Wolfe. I was born and raised in Venice. On the issue of short-term rentals, I would ask you, this honorable body, if, given that there is little hope of appealing to the conscience of city governments, would there be any moral prohibition to neighborhoods and communities taking it upon themselves to act in a more assertive fashion? Would there be anything wrong with really giving the tourist a knuckles when they show up at your neighborhood? And I don't advocate violence in any way. I'm not in favor of bashing them in the head with bricks, or hitting them in the kneecap with a 2x4, or kicking them in the face with a steel-toed boot. I disavow all violence unless it's absolutely enjoyable. But really, there's no other response. We're not getting any other response from you, so perhaps we'll do it ourselves.
Thank you, thank you. Valencia Gordon and Joe J. Yes.
Hi, my name is Alf Farmer. I'm a Koreatown resident, and I want to encourage the council to move on a policy regulating short-term rentals. It's already illegal, and it needs to be, it needs to be enforced, and it needs to be regulated, and the cap should be at 60 days. I'm lucky to have a relatively short commute to work, but even in that short distance that I go, I often see, every morning, people waiting for Ubers, clearly having just come out of an apartment building near mine, waiting for, you know, getting out of their Airbnb. This is a huge problem in every neighborhood across Los Angeles, as we're seeing. We're losing affordable housing at a horrifying rate. We're already in a housing crisis. Airbnb is only making it worse. We need to regulate it. We need to regulate it yesterday, so I want to urge the council to act on this and act with a low cap, under 80 days, 60-day cap. Thank you.
Yes. Please come forward, identify yourself.
Good morning. I'm Ina Henry. I live in Tarzana in Council Bloomfield's district. I'm here today because I know you've heard a lot of arguments on both sides of the short-term rental debate, but I'd like to share my story with you. A few years ago, my husband and I bought our home, and it was my childhood home, and planned to raise our daughter there in the quiet, peaceful neighborhood that I grew up in. However, we found after purchasing our home that the home next door, and now the home across the street, are used for Airbnb, and we have to listen to loud parties and glass breaking and 2:00 a.m. basketball games. And that's not to say we always had perfect neighbors, but we could always, you know, go next door and ask them to be quiet, and now it's, you know, going next door every night to see different people and asking them to be quiet. And, you know, I understand that a lot of people make ends meet by renting their home out on Airbnb, but I don't think that our family should be collateral damage.
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Susan Hunter. I'm with the Los Angeles Tenants Union, Hollywood Local. I'm the caseworker, and I'm here today to talk about the fact that we do need a 60-day cap on our Airbnb legislation. There's an entire group of us that are here today, and we're here today because we're tired of our voices being drowned out by Airbnb lobbying money. Unfortunately, that seems to be the only thing that the majority of people are interested in, is how much money we're gonna get, the taxation. I'm here on behalf of two different buildings in Hollywood, specifically 5825 Sunset. When we talk about Airbnb, we have an assumption that there's a person there who's nice, who hands you the key, who sets you up. That's not happening at 5825, where the tenants who still reside there are expected to be the concierge and the security. They've had four home robberies in the last two years. They've had multiple car break-ins in their secure garage area, and this is all due to the corporate Airbnb operators that are operating under corporate leases with the property owner. We are relying on you to step up and actually do something for tenants, so that when they walk out their door, they're not faced with tourists who are lost, but are actually able to go home to a safe environment. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. Hi, my name is Valencia Gordon. I am a renter, and I'm also a union member. I'm here to speak on the short-term rental ordinance, to urge the council to please move ASAP, because as you guys are taking your time and choosing to forget about us, we are losing our homes, we are losing our jobs, and there's gonna be nowhere for us to go. Where do you guys expect us to live, on the street? Do you expect us to go out of state? People have been here for decades, years. If you guys don't care about us, then who will? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, I know I have more people to call. I will call them. Can we move to the special? So let's recess, move to the special, and take care of those items.
Bloomfield, Bonin, Buscagino, Sedia, Englander, Harastas, and Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present and accord, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, the, what's the first item?
Item 18 is the item for which public hearing has been held.
So let's vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll to have you like to vote.
11 eyes.
Continue.
Items 19 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Sedia.
Receive and file the committee report and approve the CIO recommendations.
Okay, let's take the cards. Mr. Englander.
I have a special announcement that I wanted to--
Go ahead.
--for a second. He's been here for some time, and I want to recognize and introduce Felix Wong from Hunan, China. Thank you very much for being here today. Let you also know, Mr. Wong is here about a possible multimillion-dollar investment in Los Angeles in building a mental health, dependency hospitals, and transitional housing. He's breaking ground on the very project that we need in Indio that's coming up in October, and is looking here now to invest and build one of those same projects that we encourage and urge investors to come from anywhere, because we need those facilities here in Los Angeles. So we're so honored and so proud to have you here, and very welcome that you're in our presence, and we want you to invest in Los Angeles. We need, desperately need transitional housing and mental health facilities here, and our door is open for you. So thank you very much for being here. If we can give him a round of applause, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's do 19, 20, and 21. Okay, Mr. Murphy, please come forward. Mr. Previn, if you'd prepare to come up after Mr. Murphy.
Yes, I support this item. If you can help the people out with the homelessness and everything else, I support the item.
Okay, Mr. Previn.
Yes, sir. We're in the special meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thank you, sir. I took notice of Item Number 19, which was very similar to Item Number 17 on the regular agenda, but it just had a few extra details. The one that caught my attention, this is, by the way, regarding Habitat L.A., which is a regarded group, I think it's called Habitat for Humanity, actually, and what we're doing is providing some city property in the form of a big loan, actually, to several individual units, and then Habitat's gonna help with it, and we're gonna transfer them over to that group, and they're gonna manage it, is my understanding. But Item 8 of the Item 19 is the one that caught my attention, because it says authorize the CIO to make any necessary technical corrections to implement the intent of this action. Now, whenever I see that, I'm alerted, because it's Richard Llewellyn, and Richard Llewellyn is the CIO interim, but he's the guy who refuses to make recordings of the HC, all these meetings up in Prop HHH, for example, as you've heard me talk about and write about, and we asked the mayor to make those recordings available, so that we can monitor work of Mr. Servantes, Rushmore Servantes, and make sure that the goal of all that money that we asked taxpayers to come up with is being put to the use that we intended, because there are some concerns. There are a lot of concerns on that. Item Number 21 is the conflict of interest item. We have a law firm that's helping with Mr. Krikorian's automatic weapon issues, which are important, but they don't take any money, they're pro bono, and that is a big red flag, because he runs the Budget and Finance Committee, and these firms that are so helpful for free, one of the firms, if I'm not mistaken, was a firm that's connected to Mr. Llewellyn's partner, I forget the name off the top of my head, but, but why can't we find a different way than having the people who are making the legal settlements, like the $6.5 million deal yesterday for the guy who got hurt on a bicycle in Sherman Oaks, and I don't know if you heard, sir, but $9.5 million, Artie Burgoff doesn't represent Exxon for tasers, but in Chicago, they settled a case for the use of a taser, where Mr. Englander got us 3,400 new tasers for a song. They settled a case for $9.5 million. Disaster. So, I would ask that we pay closer attention to the legal shenanigans that we face day in, day out in this hall. You know, is the guy who was injured, you know, how can this man possibly survive if we're not going to take care of the potholes in our communities, if we're not going to, if we constantly defer the infrastructure stuff that we need to do, rather than--
Mr. President, the speaker's off topic.
Well, I'm trying to talk about the legal conflicts of interest that we see all over the place.
Come on, Mr.--
Thank you for your interest in city government, and please, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh. And, Madam Clerk, all items in the special will go forth with as well. Yes, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and/or at Hollywood, tweeting at HollywoodDems, or at JayWalshConfidential. Number 19, this is surplus city property, development of affordable single-family homes. I don't believe it. Number 20, okay, this is the important one. Resolution relative to the declaration of local emergency by the mayor, wherever the hell he is, dated September 2nd, due to fire that has burned in excess of 5,500 acres in Latuna Canyon. Well, we can go come closer to home here. We had a major fire alarm here. It was not a test.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's eliminate, Mr. Walsh, please take a seat. You're off topic. You've been warned. Mr. Walsh, you're off topic. Please take a seat. Eliminate his time. No, Mr. Walsh, you're done. Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman. Come on, let's go. Mr. Walsh, you're disrupting the meeting. Mr. Herman, come on. If you're gonna speak, speak now. Run his time. I called him three times. Come on.
I can't run, 'cause I'm disabled. Now that we're on item number 22, 20, relative declaration of local emergency by the mayor, since I'm on topic, and Mr. Walsh, on September 2nd, 2017, due to the wildfire. Wild. We got down and we brushed the fire off, because all you taxpayers pay for all the excess 5,500 acres of Latuna Canyon area to burn. But yet we adopted the accompanying resolution by the dibble-dwarf, dwarf, who said, "Yet the emergency operations and organizations took a big step, and we put out the fucking fire to protect life and property." And then let me go on to the next item, 'cause I gotta stay on topic, 'cause I'm a white nigger. Yeah, here I am, white--
You're off topic, Mr. Herman. I've warned you-- Twenty-one. No, 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 stop his time. You're off topic. I told you to stay on topic. Now you forfeit your time. You can go sit down. Okay, who else? No, no, go sit down. Go sit down. Okay, no, you know what, Mr. Herman, let's, Mr. Herman needs to be removed from the council chambers. Please remove him from the council chambers for disruption, for disruption. He's continuing, Madam City Attorney, to disrupt this meeting. He is still--
Yes, Mr. President, for the record, Mr. Herman is--
Yes, Mr. President, for the record, Mr. Herman is continuing to disrupt the meeting.
Just, just take him outside. Take him outside.
He continues to shout.
Take him outside. Take him outside. Mr. Herman has been removed. Okay, who's the next speaker? Ann Jobe, Mr. Herman is removed and disrupted all the way to the bitter end, Madam City Attorney. So I just want to say that on the record. Ms. Jobe is not here. Ms. Ramirez, are you here? Are you on item 19 and 20? Please, just come on. I want to tell you in advance, please stay on topic, 'cause if you don't, then you'll forfeit your time. Let's keep it down. Yes?
Thank you. These un-American, unpatriotic assholes, Eric Garcetti and council members, including Erby Weston and Mike Fior, have failed miserably in preventing and combating homelessness and public safety. As you already know, we get censored and attacked and thrown out. And also, as you see, I am homeless, and I carry my shopping cart all over, because I'm a victim of crime and gang stalking by none other than the city and the county government officials.
Mr. President, the speaker is not on the agenda items.
Thank, Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Ramirez, thank you. You're off-topic, okay? I've already, no, you're not. Ms. Ramirez, your time has expired. Who's the next speaker? Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Ramirez, you are off-topic. You've been warned. Stop. Cut the ti, cut the sound. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Why don't you say that a little louder? All right? Now, go, could you remove her, please? Remove her immediately.
Mr. President, for the record, Ms. Ramirez is continuing to disrupt this meeting. She continues to shout. She approaches the back.
Thank you. Thank you, and I'll pray for you as well. Go ahead. Let's have her removed. Got, just, just, thank you. Sergeants, 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 she should be removed. This vote on items 19, 20, and 21. Anyway, welcome to our world, 19, 20, and 21.
Mr. President, I...
In fact, I'm told we should vote on item 19 separately?
Yes, Mr. President.
So on that item, let's please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now let's do 20 and 21. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And again, those items will move forthwith. Is that all of the items in the special agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if we could adjourn this special, return to the regular, and if I could then return to finish up the rest of the general public comment. So do I have Joel J., Jacques Carr, Maria Zaragoza, Amy Schmidt, Israel, Josh Trevalino Leon, well, anyway, I'm gonna let you pronounce that, Jacqueline Richardson. Yes, please come and identify yourself.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jacques Carr, Mr. President, and I'm here to address an issue that's a canon similar to the issue that great Congresswoman Maxine Waters is addressing now, specifically the volatile activity that just occurred a couple of minutes ago. You know, this is a canon terrorism, and it's very disappointing that I have to sit here as a citizen and watch you be subjected to it, Mr. President. I'm here to recommend that you make use of California Penal Code, Section 415 and subsection 3, which specifically covers matters like that. I understand that your hands are tied. I've been told more than once that the Corporation Council recommends and suggests that you don't prosecute, or put them in jail for 90 days and fine them for $400. But I think it's imperative that you do so, and that the council begin to consider it as a whole. This is unacceptable. It's a bad, it's a bad impression for anyone who visits Los Angeles and see them with their attitude toward you and the council as they do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And let's just make sure for the record that we do, did have an individual that's in the audience that was offended by the behavior, and he has every bit the right that the others have to come here, speak what's on his mind, and should not be subjected. So that is a disruption, and I just want to have that on the record. Yes, ma'am, identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Maria Zaragoza, and I am here to express my support for a plan that will reduce the number of existing billboards in my community in exchange for all, for allowing some appropriate located digital signs. So if you're, you know, today they're gonna go ahead and vote, and I suggest, you know, my thing is to vote, go for it. You know, we need that. We need it in LA. We need it in Boyle Heights and around the areas. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have the next speaker, please. Hello.
Good morning, Mr. President and Council. My name is Amy Schmidt, and I'm here today to ask for the strongest possible limit on Airbnb rentals for units in and around Los Angeles. I'm here to speak on behalf of the young professionals who move to LA every year, thousands of young people who are forced to default on their college loans just to be able to pay their rent and eat. And I'm also here to read for the record a list of people who's, who have written letters for the council, Churches in Action, Black Meetings and Tourism, the LA Civil Rights Association, Purnell Cox, and the Black Business Association. I have these letters here, and I'm here to hand them off to the clerk. Thank you so much for your time today and allowing me to address you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Hello there. My name is Josh Trevalio. I live in Los Angeles. I'm 24 years old, and I live with my parents, and I'm here to speak against, like, Airbnbs, 'cause I'm super young and trying to move out of my house, and all the rent in my neighborhood is insane, because there's no rent control on the Airbnbs, and there's no limit on, like, how long they can do it. So I think there needs to be, like, some control on it, 'cause I'm trying to, like, you know, move out and become an adult, and right now I'm 24, living with my parents. So I feel like Airbnbs are kind of making it hard for me to do that, 'cause there's no, like, rent control or, like, regulation on it, and I would hope that eventually some, like, regulation could happen, you know? Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Is it Israel?
Yes, hi. My name is Israel Baruga Morabai. I'm here representing my family. Recently, I had a hard time paying my rent. I paid $2,500 bucks for a two-bedroom, and my neighborhood just keeps going up and up. I recently had to move to a smaller one-bedroom for only $350 cheaper, believe it or not, because that's, that's what's available in the neighborhood. There's nothing else. There's an entire building on the corner of my block that has been converted to Airbnb units. First of all, there's no security on it. Anybody comes and goes. There's different party boys and girls every night of, it's just, it's, they're drinking, they're breaking glass bottles everywhere. There's no security. Nobody's watching them. They come in, every time it's a different group. It's, it's different people. It's not like I can put a finger at somebody, it's like it's their fault. It's not. It's Airbnb's fault. They're, they converted an entire building. There's, like, 50 homeless people in my neighborhood. I, I try to give sandwiches to whoever I can, but I can't feed them all. This city should do something about it. It's your responsibility. They, there needs to be some, something...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Richardson? Ms. Richardson? Ms. Richardson, please come forward.
I'd like to speak against having so many liquor licenses available. The young people have no place to go that's really decent for them. Some of these young ladies visit some of these places that have liquor licenses, looking for husbands. It's not the best, best place for them to be. After visiting these liquor, liquored licensed people, it doesn't look right for a young lady to be up there sipping a beer or even a glass of water. Maybe the best thing to do would be to have real decent places for these young men and women to attend who don't serve liquor, but maybe that would be the best solution. Some of these liquor licenses, if people drink too much, if they drive a car, they can have a $2,500 fine. So that makes drinking liquor a little dangerous, especially for young people.
Okay, that concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what business is before this body?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members? Mr. O'Farrell?
Mr. President, our summer series of films continues at Echo Park Lake, so tomorrow, September the 9th, at 8:00 PM, we are screening Blake Edwards' classic Victor, Victoria. All are welcome. It's free. We're serving popcorn. We'll have resources available for anyone who might need them. We invite all of you to attend the movie screening of Victor, Victoria, tomorrow night at 8 o'clock in Echo Park.
That's a good one. Okay, any other announcements? If all in the council chambers could please rise. Adjourning motions. I'm looking to my right, which is Mr. Coretts's side. Are there any adjourning motions? I'm going to my left. Mr. Englander.
Colleagues, while this is sort of more of an announcement than an adjourning motion, it's somewhat of both, because starting September 10th through the 16th, we're starting on our National Suicide Prevention Week, and this one is one that hits home certainly for me and maybe for some others, and I've had some friends who's been in this situation. Last month, this council passed a resolution recognizing the Matthew Silverman Foundation. I want to thank you all for that. It was named in memory of a young, promising teenager who took his own life. He was 18 years old. He had no signs at all, depression, no signs at all of anxiety. His parents were loving, involved parents, who nevertheless did not see any warning signs at all, as we find our teens often reluctant to come forward to share things that trouble them. In fact, more today than ever, is it, it's more difficult for our, our young ones to have a discussion, to learn about conversation, to address anything, a lot of it having to do with these. They don't even know how to communicate anymore because of phones. Matthew Silverman was not in an isolated case. Suicide is one of the leading causes of death amongst teenagers. In fact, it's the second-leading cause, and growing. We do not serve them well with silence, and even if the subject is uncomfortable, we should all be there. What we're finding is critical, is critical to stopping suicide, is that it takes a whole community. It can't just be a single program at a school, but it takes awareness and a willingness on the part of the parents, the teachers, and every other student, and even other students to be knowledgeable of the warning signs, and not have fear of broaching the subject with others, and to know who and when they can turn to others to help someone who has experienced or expressed thoughts of depression, anxiety, or suicide. This conversation is absolutely critical for our children, to not just survive, but to flourish. Every young person who has dreams, and we in this body should know about dreams, and doing everything we can to enable those with dreams to shape our world. So if you'd like to learn more about what we're doing and launching this next week, I urge you to go to the foundation at Matt'sFoundation.org. We're gonna have activities ongoing on social media, and the hashtag is #ItTakesAllOfUs and hashtag StopSuicide. So while this is not officially an adjourning motion, we, we know that there are many in our society that are struggling each and every day, in our own communities, in every community. It knows no social, economic, racial, any boundaries at all. It affects everybody at all levels, and particularly amongst 14- to 25-year-olds. And so I want to thank you very much for giving me this time and opportunity to share this with you, and be cognizant, and look around, and be aware, and conscious, and open your eyes to those who are around you, and if you see something, say something, work with them. And I ask you this: When you sit with somebody, feel free to open up to them. Ask them what's wrong. Ask them how they're feeling. Ask them how you can help. Make sure, make sure that you don't have a clock running. Make sure that you don't take that phone call or look at your phone. Make sure you don't say, "Can I get back to you? I've gotta run off to a meeting." Give them an unlimited amount of time, and unconditionally, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Are there any more adjourning motions to my left? Again, to the right, I don't see any. Everybody have a safe weekend. This council meeting is adjourned.